Welcome to this episode of Let's Make a Flag.
Welcome, everyone. So this is our first exercise to identify the designs that commissioners feel merit for their consideration. Several commissioners were unable to make it this evening, but we did ask them to provide us with their, the flag that they wanted us to consider further. And so we have, you know, we've set up the room in numerical order with all of the flags. We have removed the flags that other commissioners have already selected, so they are on the wall for further consideration. And so we've already begun to do that. So I'm now going to ask the commissioners in the room in person. We're going to take about 10 minutes and we will, we will do our work and determine which flags you want to move over to the, to be considered area and, and then we will begin.
But if it's already there, we don't have to mention it.
Correct.
Confuse things as we start looking for.
Can we circulate for a little while and see where our numbers?
So we could do like a 10 minutes, yeah. And we have 10 minutes to kind of circulate, walk around, look at the numbers.
Move them or no?
Okay, well, I'm guessing this is that I also kind of talk about what our process is going to be tonight so that we are prepared as we're thinking. Ellen, can we not have a side conversation right now? Thank you. So, so, so again, we're going to take 10 minutes, we're going to go around and we're going to, you know, select the, the images that we want to move for further consideration. And so once we've identified those designs, we're going to start grouping them together thematically as, as much as we possibly can. And I'm going to ask commissioners to help us then identify some themes. We can then move forward into discussing the designs in, in the groupings. So we'll continue to do that. And then if we can get that far this evening, we will then ask for a champion and a critic for each of the designs. We'll begin that process of trying to refine the, the number of designs by defending and criticizing the, the designs. Obviously, the critics' design is just to point out the weaknesses and, you know, and that should be done within accordance with our, our design guidelines and evaluation criteria. You know, and then we'll move forward. If there's no champion, we might just decide to move that design out of the, out of the process and back onto the, the, the wall that will not be further considered. So does that kind of work? That's, everyone remembers, we had discussed that in an earlier meeting after Ted came, met with us. And that is the process that we've come up with for this first phase. Okay?
So we're, while we're walking, we can grab them off the wall and put them over here as the move on ones.
Right, yes.
This wall is the heat wall for further consideration.
And for those folks that can wait, we just, we've already taken the designs that people who were not able to come this evening, those folks who couldn't come, they sent in the numbers of the designs that they wanted us to consider further. And we've already moved them to that wall. If we get a lot more, we might have to clear a wall so that we can get all the images up that we want to look at for further consideration. Okay?
I guess I had missed meetings apparently because I didn't know that we had decided on the process that we were going to do. I thought we were going to discuss that, but we just said the dates for these meetings. But I didn't know that we had voted on.
But back in August, you know, it was voted on. All right, so, okay, so if we need more than 10 minutes, we can, you know, we just.
I mean, a quarter of an hour.
Thank you. I'll check back in 15 minutes and see where we're at. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is 186.
So right now, we are going around and taking the pieces off the wall that we want for further consideration. But that wall has already been taken. People have already taken those off that they've come tonight, so they've already identified those for us.
As the ones they want to keep.
So that, so that will express further. Yeah. And so then our job is to go around and figure out which ones, if any. And there's a lot of them.
So that way it's fine.
I'm just making my own experience, I got pretty funny.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll use that.
I guess it was just an explosive breaking.
Those ones are ours.
Is this also this door?
Yes, yes, this is, this is a wall we're working on over here too, with this door.
But not this wall.
Not that door. And we could do that little wall right there.
Or here on the glass is fine too, but we need more space. For Ian, the purpose of this, a certain one that we like and want to consider is moving this wall here.
It's just looking at everything.
We even have the amber and yellow.
And nobody choose it if we don't have to go in there.
Are you sure you set up?
I'm bringing your jacket, yeah, sorry, don't see this.
Read the description.
Way back to the sheet, yeah.
Yeah, that helps kind of the language. Because I hit 114 and I really like rock on. Yeah.
I think we're ready to use the door.
Oh, we have part of the wall.
Okay.
Oh, the door.
Yeah. So. Can you sort of?
Yep, yep, these are, these are.
That might be easier than just putting one this door.
I think eventually, when we all come to a consensus, we'll probably want to group it in one column, right? I don't know, but.
It's a current pen. They gave it the correct pen.
So.
That traffic is terrible out there.
The sun is terrible.
About 20 minutes.
Yeah, it is really bad.
Nothing even was going on.
Yeah.
There was no idea. There was a blue bird, nothing.
I'm just trying to tell you what we're up to. Okay. We began by putting the pieces on the wall, on that wall in this side of the room. People who are absent tonight, they, they sent us their numbers. And so then the rest of us are now going through and selecting designs that we want to keep for further discussion, which we're going to be putting over there as well. Okay?
So we just.
No, we're moving them if you. I'm just. Well, yeah.
He had one of me as revenge. I was taking a picture and he looked right at me.
Wait.
Yes, I have the text, remember. I have the number. Okay, and you just have the picture, I suspect.
No, so that's what I was saying. I was wondering coming back from farm, like did I refer?
Not print.
It's made in France.
Yeah. Which is why it's much better to be here and also be compared to one another and get a better.
The print sound is nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of them was like coming from.
You know, so.
Fire is.
Same, same, same. But honestly, the back.
Yeah.
Obviously.
That were the. Yeah, I mean, I don't think that they are.
You're right.
They don't have time or reason, but I'm like, it should feel the way you want to feel because of the way you designed it.
Right. Right. In fact.
It represents.
Right. No, that's a very good point. Yeah, a lot of signs were aggravating. Like especially with the cross lane.
Some of the employees aren't there on.
Anybody breaking out.
By castle.
Right. Something is. Especially. I'm going to work down.
So what were all these? Yeah, that I'm. Sure.
Yeah. Kind of goes back up. Yeah. But then some of the free things like members, I liked it, but then one thing. Oh, sorry. Yeah, and also it does it. But I do love the one that represents.
Oh, that's clarity.
Yeah, the golden white and the central logo. To the same color standard and the design. The decision to use gold as the primary color.
My.
Is to symbolize the. It always goes with blue.
I'm drawing the like top middle ones. But also.
Yeah, I mean, that. Yeah, I did it. That had like seals.
The similar Maryland. Well, yeah, exactly. Like the point of coming in. People were wearing different order.
Yeah, that was kind of my intention as well. Because also it's like, it's on separate things. I'm interested in. We're really interested in this one. It was interesting to people who. You might follow.
Design design.
Knows though, so, and I.
Weird, something steeled down there. Three minute warning, three minutes?
It's the one. Kind of the middle, center, green one with one of like the.
Yeah.
It's last one?
Yeah.
You can tell what that one is from. One where they like. Flag is grumbling on top of another man. Yeah, those ones.
All right. So, um, does anyone need more time? Thank you, Ellen.
I'm not.
All right, we can, we can give more time. Don't worry. Want everybody to be able to make their selections.
Aside from the fact that there are no giants in this room?
Eighty six.
No, just eighty.
George, the other?
Yeah, just one.
All right. So, great. Now that we've identified the designs that we want to consider further, we, I think a good plan might be to try to regroup them thematically or color-wise or some way, shape or form in that, to see what patterns kind of emerge. And I want to ask the commissioners to, you know, just, you know, shout out some, some themes that you might see or how we might be able to organize these a little bit more for us to review.
Well, we could just do it based off of color. I mean, there's definitely the Maryland colors as well as the like triangle thing from the Maryland flag as well. Or, I'm so sorry.
I'm not.
The rectangle. I apologize. Don't please question when I say things because I think things, but something else comes out. And then also like either symbols such as the bird, the golden finch, as well as the weed. Those are definitely hip hop. And even the symbol of the county geographically, it's also kind of a strong symbol.
I like organizing by symbol.
I need to.
Just like it's colored and change, right? Like the expression.
Yeah, I call weed invisible hags. That's just fun. There are, we could group them, like you said. Okay, so I think what we need is some help clearing our, maybe this one main wall here so that we can start moving the designs that we want to keep so that we can look at them here. Now, we do need to, we don't want to, just in case people want to refer to them later, we need to take the tape off of the back, okay? So if we can take a few minutes to do that.
So maybe helping.
Yeah.
We're taking them down and make some room so we can start moving. If you can remove the tape, create a notch and take the, the tape back that are on the next side so that when we stack them together, they don't stick together. We do want to preserve the.
Harder to take the tape off.
Ellen, Ellen, move on this wall. We're just trying to make.
Well, I got it.
He's just going to figure we're doing all of them.
Yeah, we'll have to get it off this shelf.
You know, like working.
Stop working.
No, I don't. I'm like lining them up.
Madam Chair, do you, would you like folks to volunteer to start grouping these or?
Yeah. Yeah, we can start grouping if we've got space. Yeah.
Yep, you do.
All right. And there's a volunteer. That season, we're like. Got in a pattern, like, like that pattern and this pattern. Yeah, we're on the show over here, all the little selected ones.
Are they part of you?
Yeah.
If it's. Thematic win.
Okay, we said. Color, simple setting color.
Maybe like the concept that is. Okay, weed is the most. Yeah, so we should put that. So maybe it starts to be.
Pharaohs and.
My is my. Oh, of course, thank you. Also, I love your. Well, thank you.
Oh, five nine.
With my land. A weed over here. I think it's to take that horse bait. Yeah, that's a very like.
It's the. United States. They're not hurt. Yeah, thanks. Bring some more weed.
Yeah, more.
What's the thing?
We're rocking the weed.
It's goes like.
The shape of the round.
That's like every other weed.
I always.
Definitely have weed. Yeah, that's kind of.
And those two are your what?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
And then where you want ones, we can go. Might work.
Yeah, or maybe like stars.
There's kind of a meat.
On the water.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I'm not.
Yeah, but this is going to make you feel like you're managing. Yeah, that's true.
These are all.
I'm having a hard time.
Yeah. Where you want to.
Remember where you want. I need to. Thank you.
There was one or two that I. I went.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a bigger ask.
What is this area?
That's right.
Right.
Yeah.
This one as well.
And we did. It's the one that cried in turn. From talking, I changed.
Pretty weird, waterproof, folks.
For like.
But, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, we think, oh, never mind.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think you never. I've been asked prior.
I think he's all.
Right, Aaron, which is. I feel like this one is more, like.
I don't, yes, that's what he's from.
It's someone who's. That's what I was. Which if I know, yeah, process, I want to.
I can do that.
There's a quadrant that goes up. Yes, very. This is a single, you know, bridge.
I'm having trouble because my eyes won't go down. Then I look again, and it's like.
Yeah, that's, that's making different. Description.
Yes, themes emerging, feel like.
Some of them are kind of.
They are.
All right. Just like, we've got symbols on this wall to be considered. We've got stars on this wall. We've got geometric, with some cross over, with a, a. We've got just the Howard County.
Land.
Shape. We've got the, the goldfinch. We've got wheat, and then we've got quadrants. Those are our, our, our categories.
Maybe eliminating some, or that, like.
By.
Could be pulled back up, like, the, like, I, and like, she's mentioned eliminating. Is that possible, or?
Thanks.
So, I mean, one, yes, we can start eliminating, or we can start in the process of having an advocate and a critic and see where we go.
Go one design at a time and do that? I can't facilitate that. I'm, I'm, I'm getting all the wrong, that's me down. You gotta point us to one and say, does anyone want to advocate?
Yeah, I, I, I definitely will do that. I just want to get to the point of, do we want to narrow, refine the groupings?
Well, that's what I just said.
For the group discussions? Or do we want to go, I mean, those are the two options.
I think if we eliminate first, we'll be here for less time, and I'm hungry.
Okay.
I would nominate the one with the blue to white gradient over there in the symbol category because I don't think that's very conducive to be readable as a symbol, and the gradient would cause, like, issues with production.
Okay, and.
Would be number sixty-six.
Sixty-six. If there's advocate for that, if there's an advocate, we will keep it. If we, if we don't, we can eliminate it. You're advocating for it? Okay, so you. So, okay.
Oh, I can get it?
So, why, why is it, why is it a good design?
Why is it not a good design?
Are you saying, are you agreeing? You're saying you support and advocate.
She's attacking.
Do we have anybody who supports keeping that design in, in, in consideration? No?
I will.
Hold on.
Go and go.
Oh.
Go on.
All right.
First elimination.
Anyone else want to make a suggestion on, on?
For Google?
Yep.
So, the one with the torch is very similar to the leadership Howard County logo. I don't know what that would resolve in copyright issues.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. So, you're an advocate in support of this? No? No? All right.
Absolutely. Another issue?
No, I mean, it's very possible that that's.
I've been writing for.
Is there another suggestion of?
I have, behind you, I can't read the number, I'm sorry. It's like, got the, it's blue, yellow, and black.
Twenty, something.
I'm just not sure what that symbol is, so I think it would be hard to, I mean, I have to go back through and probably read, but since it's a symbol, it's unrecognized, so it might be challenging to.
Yeah.
Just know it right off.
We should know what's.
Well, yeah.
We should read. I, I just think we should read.
Yes, yes. But, but as in, like, as a viewer, a lot of people aren't going to read the symbol of the flag. They're going to see it, if they don't recognize it, then that's something that.
But Chelsea, the only thing is that, that when we talk about the Indian flag, it looks like just two rectangles of gold and blue. But when you read about it, you understand it's the wheat in the sky, and it talks about the famine and all of that stuff, and how people find importance in that. So I think they do have to read the explanation.
So, yeah. I really liked twenty-three. Basically, what they were explaining was it was a key, and then two symbols that are Roman gods and goddesses.
With swords and dino.
No. So, one for wisdom, and then one for agriculture. And then they put it together in order to make it look like a key. So I just thought that was really interesting. Yeah, and kind of cool, but I am so here for hearing what everybody else thinks.
Yeah, I, I, there's so much you can say about buying a design thing in a certain way, but the regular citizen of Howard County is going to see that and go, what the heck does that mean? And, yeah, they could look it up, but are they? They won't, no.
Also, the simplicity, so simple, a child could draw it. I think that that is, that's a good, yeah.
Well, is that really part of the simplicity that we indicated?
Well, it's good flag, bad flag.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's a, yes, I would definitely buy it.
Okay, because everybody kept saying that, and I was like, where did they get that?
No, literally.
I think because schools really do, like, these kids are drawing these flags.
Right.
I do think it's more than that.
So, do we have? Still have an advocate for this, or?
Do you like any better that you'd rather see?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a great question, and, yeah, so you're great.
So that should be something that the advocates consider. Not, not that they don't advocate if you like it better, but like, like it has to be the same amount as another one.
Okay, I'm moving this on top of the board. Any, anyone else want to call some of the design suggestions to call?
Since we're talking about simplicity and a child being noted as a thing, I think that one over there on the wall, the bottom left, is going to be really difficult. Honestly, either of those are very complicated.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a lot, if a lot. I agree.
So I just stick to the one, one, four colors.
Right. Yeah.
And if it shrunk down, it'd be really difficult.
I think.
I'm not hearing an advocate for this at all.
But either of them.
Okay.
Oh, I have a couple of monuments up there now. This, and the reason why is because the intent of designing something new was to reflect what Howard County is today. And that is certainly reflecting the melting pot that we now have in the county. And having the, the whole design of our borders and everything, I think is going to be so recognizable by the average person who will not have to ask any question about what is Howard County about. And it's about people and the land, and it's all there, and having the actual description of what we're talking about. When you, when you go places and you see Fifty Shaggy, you know, that one tells you what it's all about, where it's from. So I advocate to keep that.
Okay, so let's.
The floor about what we are today.
Great, so let's keep that in on the board then. Any other suggestions of refinement, for refinement?
One with a tree root, what was, to me. Yeah, just because, again, shrinking down, I think the concept's really neat, roots, but, but I do think that it's very, very complex.
How can you kind of hear the clouds in the sky?
This is number forty-three. Thank you.
I don't think it would hurt when we're considering something to take off to at least read the description of what's, is trying to say, just so we get another chance to consider, does it actually do that?
I've been reading, I've been reading them, because I, I also think.
It's number forty-three, and someone read it the last.
When we choose, when we choose a flag, are we not using the answer description as to why they chose? So we have to.
That is part of it, yes.
Right, with what they're saying. It's, it's, it's showing, right? So I've been really going for reading.
Yeah, because some of the, to go off of, you're saying, some of the symbols, like, I thought were really interesting, but then reading the description, I did not agree with.
Same.
With what. So I was like, yeah, no.
Yeah.
This one says, the roots represent the diverse origins, cultures of the many citizens in Howard County, and how we all come together to create something strong, long-lasting, and beautiful. It also represents a strong connection to nature and environment that Hoco Native citizens have. The semicircle represents community holding the trees together, and the thin, thin semicircle represents the many rivers and lakes, and most importantly, the just big bed. The thirteen stars represent our connection to Maryland and being one of the original thirteen colonies. Maybe blue is honor and essence of nobility. White is light and purity. Like, I have no idea, was this light blue? Lakes, rivers, and days. Green represents nature and the environment, and the yellow gold represents both the original Maryland flag and the original Howard County flag. So, not things that we necessarily all saw right away.
So do, do we want to keep it in consideration, or do we?
I don't want to say straight up eliminate it, but I do, like, I'm nearsighted, and I can hardly tell what it is from over here. And one of the things I think about is if it was so small, far away from me, would you be able to recognize what it's supposed to be?
I think it's too busy.
Yeah.
I mean, but I, I, it's not even, it's very weird.
And I don't ever want to, like, dismiss someone's artistic intent, but if it's not coming across, then that's not coming across.
And, you know, roots of the tree are not really, they don't look like that. They're flowing, curved. And this is jagged, and it looks like Halloween. No, I, it's just, I had it, it looked. But I, I like the description. I mean, there is no agriculture, food security point, but there's, that's true.
But if the green is supposed to be nature, so.
Yeah, so I think it's.
It's, I think it's busy.
Good, Mariana?
I, I think we should have another pile, just, and here's why. I think that since we also, not only are we supposed to be creating a list and drilling down to them and everything, but if I'm not mistaken, isn't, we don't have the flexibility of at least possibly taking elements and making it. So, since part of this is supposed to be also in the final report, designed to let the public know the process and how we did this, I think that maybe there's great value to knowing that in this process that we're doing tonight, and we can keep it illuminating, that we would say, we really like this. And then it gets captured so that they can make its way into that final report, so that the community can know that we really did, like, we, this is what we thought about it, instead of just, like, went to, took everything to the chopping block.
Because, because if we did recommend a change to this, it could say that the roots were needing to be more flowing.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that has potential.
So I have, okay, so we have a potential.
So, yes, I think, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start.
That's a good suggestion.
Section right over here.
Maybe change some of this design. Yeah.
I think. See, I, I, I'm on my line.
Yeah, right.
Really, like, really.
So, any, any other?
And any checks? That would be substantial, not that we see any.
And this section that we could move to another section.
There's a chair.
There's a chair in front of one of the. Oh, there you go.
In front of the EU for us? No, I love them. That's my mind. All the, there's more countries than that. Yeah.
Shall we?
Right.
To birds?
So, now, so this section here?
Well, well, don't you want to finish one section?
Oh, we're, I, somebody else was asking.
No, we can do one section at a time.
Instead of jumping all over and clear up one thing and get to the next.
And I asked to, so in the original stuff, I haven't identified, maybe somebody has off the top of their head, the things that basically keep it simple stupid, basically, whatever they think is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we maybe just, again, review that, or just the top high-level things of what Dead J said?
After that's, like, read to us or something?
Sure.
The quick and dirty of it, and then look at those to make sure that someone don't get it flack because of that?
So I'll, I'll just go through that for everyone. So, keep it simple. A strong design in that category would be a design that is simple, understandable, unites the layout, and is visually arresting and memorable. Design and graphics are scalable and recognizable when moving or seen from a distance. That would be a strong, but keep it simple. The next one is use meaningful symbolism. A strong use of symbolism is, symbolism is, directly relates to Howard County and is instantly recognizable. Okay, our third quality is use two to three basic colors. We extended that to two to four ourselves. And, and so it's two to four colors are used to create a strong visual impression, and it connects to the, it connects the design and symbolism to Howard County. The next one is be distinctive or be related. And that, in the strong category, that would be a design that is unique, thematic, and distinct, and references existing design elements in a distinct way that may connect with more than one Howard County strength. The next criteria would be enduring appeal. And in the strong category, that is a design that has strong visual appeal and reflects Howard County's shared history, values, aspirations, and diverse cultural communities. And then the next one is the written description. And a strong written description is the description that is compelling and clearly articulates connection to one or more aspects of Howard County and is depicted as such in the design.
So, up to maximum is four colors, then?
Yeah.
Maximum of four colors?
That was, yes.
So, that one, are those ones that have the, right there, they have five?
The other thing, though, if we say four colors, we can keep a design in and say, given that, we change it to this.
Yeah, correct. So we could, we could make that, we could.
But we might end up with people with green hands, which might still not be as conducive to the artist.
So right now, we're in this section.
So I would personally, now, I know that a lot of the public really liked, I think that's one-twenty-three, and then the one of, they really liked that one, but also the flag above it. I, personally, I don't really like the color scheme of the Maryland flag because I don't think that it's distinctive to Howard County. And I don't think that it represents the diverse community of Howard County. Yes, when I see that, I'm like, oh, cool, Maryland. But that doesn't make me think Howard County, and that's what we're trying to represent. So personally, those two, the one all the way at the top, that's like the diagonals with, like, the Maryland colors, as well as the one on the right, that is this way, with the Maryland, thank you, with the Maryland colors. I think all of those should be eliminated.
So I, I would say I disagree with that because, when you think about a flag, especially like if you look at Frederick, that just read it theirs, they kept, kept the same color scheme because I think one idea is to think that we're a smaller piece of a bigger whole, which is why, like, you see so many of them keeping that Maryland color scheme because it is, we're a piece of a bigger whole, right? So you can see that connection, which is why we have the current Howard County flag with those similar colors. I agree. I, I do think that's a big part of, I mean, even some of these, I considered, like, oh, maybe you could change them to the Maryland colors.
I, I disagree with that, and we, here. Because if we wanted to be recognizable, when you see those colors, the first thing you do think of is the state flag.
Right.
And we're trying to get, distinguish ourselves from anything else so that we know it's Howard County. And that, anything that has those colors is immediately going to make you think of the state flag.
I, I'm sorry, I think the Washington commanders or Maryland.
I mean, I see those, that's what, that's what I see. I mean, I see those, that's what, that's what I see, burgundy and gold.
Yeah.
It has been a Washington symbol forever.
Redskins.
Redskins. They're not the commander.
So what I'm, I'm hearing perhaps that we don't have consensus on these yet, and I can move these to maybe the potential area and see, okay? So how many of these?
There's one, two, three.
You paring down that wall and then move them, because I think there's a few more that we can make the case that maybe they don't.
Well, all of these over here have the Maryland colors.
I mean, yeah, we don't have to eliminate because they're Maryland colors, because we could change the color scheme, but like.
That's why she said she would consider.
Right now, I'm just a little bit over to the potential area, and just tell me when I need to stop moving that to the potential area.
Well, I would say if we are going to change the color schemes of something so simple as literally lines.
Yeah.
Diagonal lines and the colors, you're literally taking away what those things symbolize.
Yes.
Those, those, the descriptions of those flags are just relying on the colors themselves.
Yeah. The color is the symbol.
Correct.
If the design is so simple that the color scheme changing would make it totally different, maybe we should eliminate those that, like, just those two basically. Because if we change anything about those colors, it wouldn't be what the artist had intended, but at the same time, not, I feel like it's not highly recognizable as Howard County with those colors.
It's real definitely.
Yeah.
We get a dinner break. So if, if we'd like one of those designs, and we say, well, we'll change the colors, we can do that, right?
We can make that recommendation. We can make that recommendation that this is a strong design if these, if these elements were either included or not included.
But I, but I don't think since the written symbolism intended would change if using the red from the Maryland flag is suddenly purple. So I don't think we can.
If that, then I, that's what I'm saying, yeah. With that, if you learn one. And the diagonal one you just moved, because we couldn't make a change that keeps the integrity of the design, we should eliminate them now, because if we don't love them like that, we can't change them without keeping the integrity of the design, so if we don't love them.
Okay. So, um, any other, uh, items on the door, and I'm going to move to this section as well now to, to, uh, do, do we feel to be removed or?
I'm not wanting that.
The second row, very top one with the white, when you see that from far away, it's very dizzying.
This one?
Yeah.
The symbols, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We could remove the, the symbols to make it a simpler design, but you are saying the whole squibble, uh, item is just a little too.
Yeah, it represents.
And there's not much contrast between.
What number is that?
That's on the reverse.
This is number six?
Number six.
We're going to have, see if, see if the description changes your mind.
It's a little wider part.
From my perspective, when Howard County is at its best, it is a place of education, progress, and responsible stewardship of the environment. I constructed this flag to represent our ethos of knowledge and enlightenment while paying homage to our agricultural foundations.
I do really like that flag, just like, I, I like the symbols of it and what you just read, like, I do think that it encompasses pretty well, at least, um, of the county. I just think it would be hard to represent the whole, but, you know, I think two parts of it, I think, represent.
I'll just say, I say rivers, hills.
Let's have her hand up first.
So my pronouns are they then, by the way, but that one I think is a really good candidate for, like, changing it up a little bit. So like, if we change the contrast between the color scheme, took the symbols off and maybe think of wiggle like one or two bumps across, that one could be visually interesting and unique for our county.
What is that?
Without, it's the atomic symbol. It's nuclear power.
No.
But it's a green.
It's green.
Because this is a leaf.
And what's the bottom?
Wheat.
Because it's a green.
Wheat.
Energy.
That's the.
If you had that on a flag and it was flowing, would you be able to see those symbols?
I haven't seen them.
And the answer is no. Maybe you would not see them, because they're, they're in the corner, you would not see them if that's a flag on a hole flowing. So you're not seeing the whole flag.
It's unique though. So if we wanted to really represent the water features of our county, that one could be a good one to edit.
Want to make a comment?
I'm not comfortable with the amount of time we're spending talking about changing these designs.
Well, yeah.
I would like to draw a heavy line and let us evaluate what the public gave us, and then maybe in a few hours.
I agree.
Let's say, okay, maybe we want to change this a little bit.
I think there's been a good much time trying to say we're going to change something that the public gave us.
There are yes, no, or potential. This is, this is so, so, yes, no, or potential?
No.
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 It looks like frosting on a cake. Don't talk about it.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing a.
No, thank you. I would also say that the top one on the right is a no, because it's pretty murky and it doesn't make me think of anything, except maybe shrimp.
Yes.
Very.
I think it was the description. I think the.
Three colors of the center, that county seal.
Yeah.
What number is that again? Fifty-eight.
Yeah. Same time, not very recognizable.
It's a little straight.
Like, a landscape with landscape colors in horizontal bars, I could get, but just colors, color picked from something that was man-made is kind of like.
But there's a lot of agriculture there, so I'm just sharing that that's what I see. And I get it, but it's not as good as several others I like better.
That's another thing to keep in mind. I love the ones on this wall, and I would honestly think any of them there, I would pass up for one of the ones on this.
I agree. Can I, can I just say that according to the description, the yellow on the bottom, which I don't see yellow, okay, represents.
That means farm land.
The green in the middle represents hills behind the farm in the seal, and the light blue at the top represents the cloudy sky atop the grassland. I don't, but I don't see that in those particular colors.
The, the, like, these versions of the colors would give a better indication of that. Like, the colors from the bottom flag are doing essentially the same thing. Even if we took the sun and the rose of the wheat out, we could tell that that's going to be a landscape.
Can we get, can we get that rid of that one? Do I hear anyone?
I just have a special book pile, so I'm looking at the images of the files on my screen, and they look a little bit different than they do printed out yet. Would it be possible for the ones that we are having discussions about, put it on the screen, just so we can see it in different medium?
Sure.
That's a good call.
Thank you.
Can pull the scholars, are you seeing these three colors? The organization that I worked for, we had a swoosh logo under our acronym, and it was those three colors, and it was, of course, we were all about agriculture, so I'm, I'm biased, but I, I do think there are many others I like a lot better, so I like the concept. Getting rid of it. Let's get rid of it.
We're narrowing down to ten, right?
Yeah.
And we, and we do have next week, we are for our next meeting, so we do have.
So we're not.
Scheduled for this, and, and there might be some discussions.
So Pauline, is that removed? That's removed, right?
I'm waiting for, no, I'm waiting for, uh, Ryan to find.
The real color.
Fifty-eight. Yep.
Is there some, it's like, not the same one. It's not a standard of the flag.
It's really close to what is already here.
It's like the Ukraine flag, Ellen.
Which is why.
I know.
I think, I think another issue is that it's only addressing the agriculture of Howard County. Point is, we're, we're so much more.
That's a good point.
Representing.
I agree.
It sounds like there is some interest, I'm gonna just put it in potential right now, and it's not.
Eliminate. Can I be a little annoying?
Sure.
So in the potential, number seventy-four, the person who wrote this literally says, "This flag does not explicitly symbolize Howard County itself." Rather meant to become a symbol of our great county.
What?
But it is rather meant to become a symbol of our great, I don't know.
Which one?
It doesn't now, but will.
I guess. Good flags are explicit and literal in their symbolism. But great flags become the symbol. But anyway, he, or they literally say, "It does not explicitly symbolize Howard County." So I would like to take that one out of the potential and move it to the remove, because I don't think that that's cool.
Okay. Anybody opposed to, uh, moving this to the other section?
That's number seventy-four.
Okay. And that is definitely.
I'll say that the way the image shows up on this screen is actually a lot brighter than it's showing up even on my screen, so. You get these variations.
I think we've made it, uh, through this back wall. That's fine.
I have a question. So would anyone like to specifically advocate for any of the designs over there? Because I feel like a lot of them aren't super, like, there's simplicity, but then there's like, it's too simple or you can't tell. So like, the two on the right are my favorite. Does anyone want to like specifically pick one of the others and explain why you think it should stay? Because to me, I don't really see very much in the design.
I would have to pick for this one. I, I just really like the, I think it's a unique little design, it's distinctive.
It'll fly.
And it will fly well.
That's a good point. I'm thinking more the ones on the door are not very conducive to this is Howard County or being any specific symbol.
I mean, what numbers, what numbers are those two?
Break from that section.
This is one, sixteen. It's like, I think we should just keep going, work process, and we are narrowing it down quite a fair amount. So I think, I think we are making really great progress.
We've already reduced.
We're just, yeah, we'll come back and, and do these. We did not do that wall either, so.
I think the middle bird is eliminated.
It's the bird.
Middle bird, that's the most detail.
Yeah, can we move that?
Move these back a little bit so we can see them there.
Yeah, they're kind of blocked.
Can you pull them up? I'm just asking you, running through it on the screen. Since we don't have a whole lot, can we see, I would really like to see if there is a difference. I suspect there's going to be some more differences in color. So number fifty-five, if you can pull that one up, we'll look at it. Um, I can, I can show you at this point, just so that we can, that's kind of move forward. Just, uh, Kate is recommending that this, uh, that there are other stronger word symbols on, on the wall, and that this one should, uh, not be considered any different.
I agree. Um, just because of also, um, the description as well. They specifically say, um, sorry, um, one.
It's not a good silhouette.
Um, yeah, so they specifically talk about the Elliott family, and I just don't think that that's appropriate. I'm just talking about the family.
At all.
Um, so I also agree that it should be eliminated.
Yeah. I think, so I'm hearing this, uh, that there's not a lot of consensus to keep this, this on there?
No. No, I do like, it does have twenty-one week range to represent our twenty, being the twenty-first.
All right. Any, any other, any other suggestions for this wall at this moment in time, or otherwise I don't see them?
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
They can't really see them. Maybe just put them on the roll out here, I hope. I mean, it's, it looks like a raven. So it's either a. It's more of a little hand, homicide. The raven is longer, but still a crow.
So we're looking at this, this section, uh, at this moment in time.
I would like to eliminate the top one. Um, can you say the number? I'm so sorry.
It is number one fourteen.
Thank you.
It's the botany cross again.
I don't think we can do that.
There were, uh, folks that testified that, that, uh, the object comes to the botany cross.
Yeah.
Any of the.
So it's been. Okay. We should eliminate it then.
It's one of the botany calls.
Yeah.
But there are some interesting other.
I think we should.
What we can do now, I know, but we'll get there, we'll get there.
So.
So I'm going to move to this wall then.
Okay.
We've, uh, we're, we're doing a great job, we're, we're culling, we're doing a great job, just keep it up, guys. All right. There's a lot of wheat here. Any thoughts?
The same, two to three to. I, I like the one that has the deer and the buildings on it and the wheat and all of, I think it grabs more of what is the true picture of our county. So, um, I like.
Yeah, I do agree with you. I think it, it really does, uh, yeah, stands out, and I think it also just indicates a lot of different aspects of.
The bird, the bird.
What's that? What's that?
Number twenty-five.
It's a little bird. Animals. What, what? He's really grand. They said. The wheat and the animals.
Remember, this is trying to be flattering.
And it's going to be flattering. It's going to see a combination of.
It's too complicated.
Yeah.
At least the, the lines in some parts are too fine.
It's a great illustration, but I don't know about.
But think about a shrunk too, remember? Because the, the current flag we have with the sheath of wheat, it, remember you said like the dress? Yeah, so now this shrunk down, it's going to be challenging, because what are you going to see once it gets smaller?
Well, we do have an advocate for that, so let's keep this on the wall right now, and let's move on to some of the other designs, because we do have an advocate for that. So are there any, uh, that, Barb?
I'm going to advocate for number eleven.
And so to, to, are we, to keep, right now, we're trying to.
I know you're trying to eliminate.
So can we?
I know.
Can we first move to, is there anything that we, we want to?
Below, the one below, the one that you like.
That we just discussed.
Yeah, the one we just discussed with the deer below, yeah, that one just seems very busy. I mean, it's, it's, it's beautiful.
It's unique, but it's.
I agree.
It's very busy.
It's not simple, so child's toy.
Okay. So I'm, I do, I'm not hearing an advocate at all for this, so I can, uh, I can.
Yeah, I agree.
And what is that? That corner, uh, is the top.
I can't tell.
It's the top. You see it though?
No.
Do you want to?
No, I, I mean, I can, it's not distinctive, the, the, the. I can't even tell, I don't.
I agree.
I mean, I'm not hearing an advocate for this either, okay, so.
The green looks like the stitching on a baseball. It doesn't look like, it doesn't look like.
Thirty-three, sixty-five, and I'm moving these to the, to the right now.
The one that has the H and the C in the middle. I have a hunch that once we pick a new flag, the county might redesign their logo to be more fitting with the flag, though right now.
Though right now.
It looks paradox.
It does kind of remind me of a banner.
Can't even tell.
Like it should be a brand.
Banner picture.
Yeah.
We don't have an advocate for this, I'm.
Okay. I think. Looks, looks like a, more like a company logo to me than, than, which one's the flag? Ninety-four?
Yeah. That actually looks like, like either giant dairy council or there's one that actually does that.
Okay, so do I hear an advocate for this?
I like it, but I like others way better. It's coming down to a lot of that.
I also think that one oh seven. Got it. This one should be eliminated again because Maryland flag. Maryland flag stopped their family things, stopped great.
Calvert.
Yeah. Not really feeling it.
And I think.
Sorry, one oh seven, I'm so sorry.
With the wheat in the middle.
Right there, right in front of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have an advocate in, in the room for this?
Let me, let me stop for a minute here. So tell me exactly what is negative about that flag to you.
Okay, let me just pull it. I don't want that.
It's not more than a style withdrawal actually.
Well, and I think often just the Maryland part.
State flag.
And also the calvert and crossland arms. Not, not great symbols.
Which one for those points?
They're not great.
On the flag, I just don't know what.
I mean, the quadrants. The quadrant designs.
You mean like on a checkerboard? That's a problem. Okay, I'm asking.
It's because they're trying to invoke the state flag, which is again, it's not really going with our goal of having our own flag. Like even if we ended up going with a similar color scheme, it would need to be distinctive. And this is like, the Maryland flag will brother.
It says, for this flag design, the background is a direct representation of the Maryland flag. Using the same colors and layout down within the calvert and crossland arms while streamlining.
County flags typically veer very far from their state flag.
Everybody does need to have a county.
Yeah.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm thinking of like Frederick that just did theirs. It very much keeps the same.
Correct.
Color, design. I mean, it looks very much like, that's, I was just curious if that's something we're really trying to avoid or.
Well, it sounds like the group has said it a couple of times.
The reason we are not using the current flag is because those symbols are not necessarily representative of where we are. And some of the symbols are actually antithetical to where we are.
And we don't want to use the calvert flag.
Well, the calvert is the cross, the crossland is the one that the Confederates marched under as Maryland. So using only one of them is more offensive.
Right.
But. So am I, we have an advocate to keep this, this design?
It's pretty much Maryland.
And we are.
We have the best state flag. Do you all agree with me?
Yes.
Do you want to take the ones with the crosses this trip too? So you don't have to keep going back and forth.
So I think we've.
They're pretty.
I know, but I have.
I would want to point out that the moment the book and the wheat on it, there's not enough contrast. It's like kind of an unreadable symbol in the middle. And I don't know how we could edit that to make it more readable without it.
I think it looks like a quill pen. Not, it doesn't look like wheat.
Yeah, it looks like a quill.
Like it said.
I have a kid for that one with the book.
I would say that.
Is there an advocate for this?
What numbers?
One sixty-eight.
No.
My sixty-eight.
It says, originally based on the first flag design, the original crossland design is simplified and streamlined. Keeping in mind the.
Yeah, oh gosh. It's more rock.
My journey.
The journey. What is that word of the county? The golden circle with the book and we are featured or prominently showing off the importance of both the past and the future.
So it also has that symbol that we want to.
It has invoked that.
I think number twenty-eight should be removed just because the wheat was kind of wimpy and skinny.
Can't be wheat.
Which one?
The one with the green and the gold and.
Yeah. Be the one that could be better than the landscape you're on. But it's still too small for me.
So where are we? Where are we, which one are we discussing?
Twenty-eight. The blue, black, gold, green. She doesn't like the wheat.
No.
Yeah. Wimpy wheat.
Well, I think it was done by the same designer as that.
Yeah.
Putting that one in the potential would be good because we could swap. I like the strikingness and the uniqueness of the like base design. I think the illustrations are what's making it pretty, like ineligible.
And I, I like the way that they were going with the illustrations. The same thing that I was saying for the other one. Like I like that they're trying to invoke.
Modernism.
Yeah, modern and agriculture, like different aspects of the county than just one.
Okay, so this one has potential.
Potential, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Twenty-eight, just to make sure, the strong and vibrant is unparalleled position in the state of Maryland. I'm not sure about that. The simplistic design stands proud.
This is currently.
It's currently recognizable. We've been moving along the dividing.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, the actually traditional placement. Well, history is ever present. It's important that we rapidly advancing.
I believe it's number twenty-four. Duke, are you reading it correctly?
Well, whether it's twenty-four or twenty, we say twenty-eight. She said twenty-eight, sorry.
It's number.
It was.
All right, so it is, it's in the potential area. So if still, you know. We can go back. Any other, any other thoughts?
There's the one, the one that has like the circle of stars. From here, it looks like palm trees with like water.
That word eighty-eight.
Yeah. Like it's very beachy.
It looks more beachy.
Yeah, it looks very beachy. From here, it really does.
Doesn't look as beachy for some reason.
Somehow the way that they like cut off the water or the.
Water is very.
It's perhaps comparing to Greenway uses, uses some peaks and.
The design symbolizes the important features of Howard County, which its people connect to and cherish.
Did they have anything specific?
The stars, yes.
The stars are supposed to be people connected.
Twenty-first star of the.
Twenty-first position.
Where the twenty-first. That's it. Twenty-first. Twenty-first.
I would say against the one right under it is less strong. If only because the symbol is made smaller by putting it in that circle. I think it's more readable as the waves and then.
Yeah, it was the second one. It's strong.
But even the contrast on that, there's no contrast like the.
But that is something we can change.
Yeah, that's real coloration.
Itself.
Yeah.
Readable. So is there any advocate for eighty-eight over eighty-nine?
I don't even really like either of them.
Yeah, if. We have an advocate for both or just one? For both.
I think they're very strong.
Okay.
I think they're simple, but they have strength to them. And they will be very easily recognizable.
Then those would be potentials.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm going to leave these here. We do have at least one advocate and, and so Kate.
I would like to discuss number one oh eight, if I'm reading it correctly. Just because it doesn't look incredibly modern, kind of reminds me of a teacup doily.
Oh, that's supposed to be the Queen Anne's lace.
I think in the description.
Is it, if it's.
Read that.
Is it Queen Anne's lace? Then I can dish it.
It just looks kind of old.
Oh, yeah.
That's the county flower, that's the county flower.
And not to weed.
It's pretty, but I think we have better options. That's more of the transparency aspect.
And we do the whole caliber crossland thing again.
Yeah.
Then do the lace, Queen Anne's lace.
Okay, I'm going to advocate to keep it.
To sprout.
I'm going to do. I'm just saying, yeah. I mean, I know, I've heard the people very clearly that I, I want to at least have there be, I just, I want to think about it. Being smaller, so I don't want to throw it out just because of the colors of the thing. I don't want it. That one is out of the ones we've seen that has the least amount of that for Maryland colors. I don't, I personally don't, that's not a deal breaker for me necessarily about the Maryland colors.
All right, we have enough advocates that we need to keep that, keep this here for now. And so any, any other thoughts? For instance, we've got three or four, three designs that are just, that are very, that are.
The images are the same.
The limiting difference, they're the strangeness. They show the wheat, they show the diversity and they have multiple color options.
So I think that's why I know I mentioned the wheat.
Well, I will say. I don't see this barely there. Yeah, I was going to say. Nothing about.
In the descriptions, it describes the.
Yeah, but the thing is, that's the whole thing. If you have to read up on it, it should be something that when you see it, you recognize it as that. And you don't have to read a whole chapter about it. It's supposed to be unique, distinguishable, and none of that is. And it only is depicting the agricultural part of the county.
And I think had your own call, it would be quite physical if it had more.
Plus imagine.
It would be really. What is that one?
I think seventy.
Seventy-one, seventy-one. It was my, it was, it's, it's my favorite one of them.
Eight seventy-three.
I think it says, the arrows symbolize Howard County's progressiveness and how it always tries to move forward and make improvements within its community. The wheat represents Howard County's agricultural roots, which is the same symbol in the whole coast government branding. If they moved it then, yeah. The greens symbolize Howard County's dedication to preserving their forests and habitats while the blue represents the tusen and that's going with it. To me, it's, it's progressive. We're not going back in the past. We're not discussing those families and Queen Anne. And that's in my opinion, I just think, thinking about who we are and the direction we're going in. This is why any of those, I think would be my, my choice.
I'm going to keep these on there because we just.
Are the colors done? Aren't, isn't that those of us that went to Wild Lake High School, aren't those Wild Lake High School colors?
Yeah.
That's exactly what.
That's it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if, if we had to choose between the three of them, I would advocate for this seventy-one. Yeah, because I think again, like you said, like they're the, the most forward thinking. I don't necessarily like seventy-three and seventy-two for the color schemes. And because it just makes me think like they're only really representing agriculture.
If you're going to talk about rivers, then I think having some blue.
Back, 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 have their hand up, so.
Thank you. Um, I like the blue one best as well. The only problem I would have with it is the contrast, but I feel like we could fix that by either making the wheat yellow or like the gold color or white. So depending how many colors. And saying that now, I'm also noticing that the one two below it has five colors. So unless someone really loves that enough to want to change the colors, I feel like that's.
It's not the giant logo. Yeah, that was one we already eliminated.
We, we already eliminated the one that was.
The giant food.
Symbol, yeah. Similar to the giant symbol.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so I, so am I hearing that this one? Okay. And I'm hearing that, that this one should stay for further consideration.
The bottom could go.
I feel that way.
And that, and shall I move these to potential?
I'm, I'm.
But that's the same.
Yeah.
Okay, so that needs to go, I think. Because of the wild, wild big colors, okay?
It just had very like olive.
It's a nice representation.
Oh, wow. Well, well, that's really nice. Damn it.
Okay, so any other thoughts? By the items that are.
Could you give me the number of that? I'd like to know what the description is. That one or five.
One seven three. I think the symbol could.
No, I, I really like one seven three. I know we're not talking about what we like, but. I will be a strong advocate for one seventy.
Okay, but what is the description?
That's what, that's what.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, the background of the flag is a rich green symbolizing the gently rolling hills covering the majority of the county. The blue, the blue in the top right and bottom left represents the Patasko and the Tusen rivers respectively. This also border the county to the northeast and southwest. The graphics in the middle are yellow in color, signifying the happiness of the county's residents. Uh, on the left is a stalk of wheat representing the county's agricultural origins. On the right is an oak branch. You see the oak branch there?
Yeah, that's supposed to be oak.
Oh, that's her oak leaves on either side. Oh, yeah, I would never, I would never.
They don't look like.
No.
Yeah, they do look like, they look like.
Well, it's more on the individual form, the shape of a star, symbolizing that it is the members of the community that guide the county's growth and development.
I really like that center symbol and how good I know what it is.
Now that you know.
And there's, there's five of them for the five county districts that make up our community.
Yeah, there's a lot of symbols.
Well, I'm an advocate of speed.
Okay, so, so we're going to at least keep it on the, on the board for now. Anything else? Anything else?
What about the, the green with the circle? You guys were kicked out. The other two look just like it.
I like that one too.
You like that one? No, I'm just asking.
It's one hundred. It's one hundred and six. I'm just trying to get. We have to turn, we have to go back up to that top.
Yeah, same circle.
Somebody is reading about, somebody reading.
Oh, we're in the middle of that one.
Number one oh six.
Yeah. So for this flag design, the forest green background represents a lush green landscape and farmland for Howard County. While the gold and white of the central logo hearkens back to the same colors found in Maryland's flag. The decision to use gold as the primary color within the central logo is to symbolize the opulence and the prosperity of Howard County, which continues to be one of the wealthiest and well-educated counties. Within the central logo are two main elements of wheat and lace. The three golden wheat stalks represent the harmony, wisdom, and understanding found within the community while hearkening back to the original Howard County seal. The white lace, oh, sorry, the white circular lace border is a simplified representation of the county's flower, the Queen Anne's lace, uh, whose flowers bloom and radiate from their center in a lace pattern.
Wow. Very official. Yeah, I think we have some more modern options up there. But I do think that one is very strong, like it holds its spot well.
Okay, so it sounds like we, we, we're going to continue to keep that on the wall for now. And so I'm now moving over to here and.
Excuse me, is there an advocate for that one next to the deer, on the right of the deer?
So that's one twenty-two.
Are you guys into that?
I, I'm not into it.
I'm not either, but I just wondered.
The giant.
I'm just trying to help.
The giant.
I'm sorry.
It's not, it's. Okay, so I, I'm not hearing an advocate for this.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
I thought maybe we just didn't.
The other two is one thirty-one and.
The numbers a little bigger.
Oh, and seven.
Just numbers.
Yes, seven. So one thirty-one and seven.
One thirty-one. Seven says, this flag is quartered into alternating yellow and red segments with the top less than yellow. The shades of these colors are taken from the Maryland flag. Yellow represents wheat, a major symbol of Howard County. Red represents blood spilled in pursuit of liberty and dignity for all its people. White represents freedom. The white lines meander to represent the indirect and sometimes difficult path taken to find freedom and dignity in this flag. The two horizontal white lady lines represent the two rivers, the Patasko and the Tusen, that turn the bulk of, that form the bulk of the.
The two horizontal white wavy lines represent the two rivers, the Patasko and the Tuscon, that turn the bulk of, that form the bulk of the border of Howard County. The center of the flag, where the four quarters meet, represents the central location of Howard County in the crossroads between urban and rural, geographically in the center of the state and midway between Baltimore and Washington.
I'm good on it.
I just don't think it's as strong as the submissions.
What did you say that?
And I don't feel that it's as strong as the other submissions that we had.
I thought y'all didn't like the rickrack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You said it looked like cup crossing somebody.
Well, it's not, it's. The flag that they took down was very, was very close. I mean.
Yes, it was.
This looks a little bit.
It is bigger.
I think if the flag is glowing, it's gonna kind of.
It's gonna be harder to read.
If they were bigger bumps, I could see it. Like if you had taken one of those yellow sections and made that a flag and maybe changed the color a little bit.
But the, the yellow section of flag?
Like as an exam.
No, but you said make the yellow section a flag.
If you, if you had taken just the yellow section and cut it off the paper.
And so.
And just submitted that. Change some of the colors, I could see that as being something that could express.
Because of the scale or the, the, the.
Yeah.
Scale.
Because the scale of the lines.
Because if that's far away, it's gonna look like a straight line, but if it just goes up and down twice, it's more readable.
Did we have an, do we, um, have an advocate for this design? That was number seven?
Yes.
Yes.
No, that's okay.
Yeah. All right.
Ketchup and mustard. What wall didn't we do? This one?
I know, we took things off.
No, no.
We took some things off because.
We had to discuss everything off.
Oh, okay.
Can every, okay, so, any?
Um, sorry, the, the bridge thing, um.
There's two, there's two bridges.
Oh, both, yeah. I, I, I'm not a big, um, I don't really like either of them, especially the bottom one with the train. I just, that just doesn't read, um, all of Howard County to me. Um, and also, I just, from here, like looking at it, that train doesn't look like a train.
No, it doesn't.
It just looks like blocks on together, so I just don't think it would read very well. And then the, the other bridge, um, again, it just doesn't really read like all Howard County to me, like. And we're supposed to have a diverse, um.
Did you want to read the, the people?
I said, Thomas Vida.
Yeah.
So I, I read up the description and the, um, the, the shadow and the kind of white. The artist said that was to represent diversity in Howard County, but it's.
Number one hundred?
Too. But yeah, it's just too, it doesn't fully represent diversity, it's two, you know, two different things, so.
Right.
I think.
I like the diversity on the edge.
Yeah.
Yeah, or I just. Shadow, that's diversity, shadow.
The description for ninety-two, can somebody look at it before I, I remove the?
No, it's okay, from, when you look at it from a distance, it definitely is.
Okay, so you just say anything? We are, we are.
We're all in agreement.
All right.
No, that's what I thought, so it's okay.
I would say the topmost one is not very readable, like I can't tell if that's a flower.
Or a.
Land on.
Queen Anne's lace.
Yeah.
I think it's a bit too intricate.
And it does look like cotton to me.
Yeah.
Which one of the, um, people who wrote in was very specific, that was like, please don't have cotton on the flag.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so no advocate for this, all right?
Is anyone familiar with the symbol on the red and white one? Like, did anyone get to read about that?
Can you, it is, it's, it is affecting to the, the.
Cross the. Cross, yeah. But they put it in a circle to be more like enunciating.
Wow.
Read the description.
The Crossland family.
Oh.
Lord Calvert. Lord.
Yeah, but it is, it is.
Um, what's that, that one that's left there? What number?
It's an open book with a summarize and.
Yeah.
I think that's number six.
Yeah.
I think that one is a really good candidate for the reworking digital one. It's like, you can't necessarily just judge it because of drawing with pencils or whatever. If we look in the shape and the design, it's very.
Number six? Number six?
Oh, number six.
If, for example, that brownish shade was changed to white and the book was a silhouette, yellow rain, green fields, I think that one is pretty strong as a design.
Uh, did you want to hear what they said?
Yes.
From my perspective, when Howard County is at its best, it is a place of education, progress, and responsibility stewardship of the environment. That's number six, right?
Yep.
It sounds very familiar to something else that was read tonight. Um, I constructed this flag to represent our ethos of knowledge and enlightenment while paying homage to our agricultural foundations. Well.
This was a young lady at the public hearing.
Yeah, she's, she did this.
No, no, she, no, I don't know if she did this, she testified in some court of it.
Oh, yeah, we don't know if she did it.
The lady that was here every time?
No, 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 no.
The younger, like.
Oh, a little girl.
Yeah. Came out to the public hearing. I, I, I'm hearing this has potential perhaps, um, or do you want me to keep it on the wall?
I, I would say keep it on the wall, but we would remember that, we would digitally rework it, and that's why. But some things we, we got rid of because there's like opacity and gradient and stuff, but it's not necessarily because the design wasn't workable.
By the way, she doesn't mention that's a book for blue, so I just wanted to point that out.
I think if you talk about education, so I think it.
You think it is a book because of that?
I think it's a book. And like. I would watch that, looking at it, I would have no idea what that blue was.
Yeah, but I also.
It's, when the sunrise is sometimes.
But I'm saying that if I looked at this without reading this, I would not know that is.
I agree with you.
It should be distinguishable.
I, I think it's more of a landscape.
Yeah.
Well, that could also be because of the contrast, like maybe.
We have narrative twenty-five.
Wow.
Hundred and eighty-four.
Wow.
Do we want to wrap up and come back?
I do one more.
That mint green one, I don't think that's a standard.
Oh, we do need to, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Erin, I, um, you were saying something?
Oh, that one's.
Oh, I, I would want to eliminate the one with the mint graining on it.
With blue.
Because it's, it's very, it's not like the standard color you could get printed or sewn together. And I don't think the design is still.
Can we?
Can we pull that one up and just make sure what it actually? Thirty-one. Yeah, also, it's, I think it's supposed to be the, the.
Hold on, let me just. Oh.
There it is. Thirty-one.
Equality.
Yep. Believe in equality and equity for all. Oh, gosh, that one worked.
Green fields and green spaces. I'm a, I don't see it, I'm not seeing it. I don't see that.
There's something about being in between Baltimore and DC. We are.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be green, it is a green color.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's green field and green spaces, but I don't.
But it's not going, I'm white here.
It's not coming, showing up.
I got it. It doesn't read even at all.
It's the brightness or the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, did I hear that there was an advocate for this?
No. I don't get the stars.
Well, there's.
Well, there's one on the bottom too.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
The very bottom, what, what is that? What number is that?
Which, which one?
Yeah, that one.
This one?
Yeah, what is that?
This is number eighteen.
The flag has four major parts. The green represents nature and Howard County's agricultural history, as well as the environmental initiatives. The blue represents the rivers and waterways that connect us. The white represents unity and peace that also represents the diversity of cultures in the county. The stars represent the five districts and equality. It's simple for a child to memorize and recreate between the US and their own flag.
I like that one.
I like that one too. Of the really simple ones, that one is pretty strong.
Okay, so I'm hearing that that one has potential. We have now, uh, uh, we have refined our flags to, I think now it's twenty-four. We have, uh, we have about, we have.
Fifteen minutes.
We have a few minutes, and we do have some people online as well, so before, do we have any members of our, our commission online who want to speak?
No, we do not.
Do we, do we want to follow the agenda and do next steps before we have public comment?
Yes.
If I'm thinking we're, we've done a, a lot of great work tonight. We already have a meeting scheduled to go into the refinement process further, uh, because they have the next meeting. And what we will do, uh, hopefully we can have a list of, for further consideration and a list of potential that then we can send to the group over the next week to look at.
The we have a condensed, like, list like this with the writing, the pictures, so it's just the ones that are still for consideration.
Yeah, you want just the descriptions?
Just like, remove the rows that were, um, removed.
Yes, we can use.
So it's not as much.
Well, we, we do the ones on the back wall.
Those were.
Those were.
Those are not.
Those, yeah, those were not part of the, the, from the first round, we, no one moved that into the potential. Potential file. Again, we have a meeting this week, and if people have second thoughts, we can always entertain those, those second thoughts, so.
So the potential ones will be on the list as well, like.
We will list them as, as for further consideration and potential. Try to do that, right, Brian?
Yes.
Only remove the ones that are actually removed.
Yes.
Maybe put the pictures, as Carol said, if you can put the picture in, that could help too.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so next on the agenda, I mean, we, uh, we did have, uh, item number three was to maybe talk about the process for public feedback on top designs. I think, uh, because we're so close to, you know, uh, eight o'clock, that we would, I, I just want you to think about what that process would, it would be. That is very important. When we get to the ten designs, we're going to have the public, um, somehow voting on them. So it's either votes, ranking, or rating. So think about what those, those, those systems would look like, what the benefits and limitations of, of those, uh, systems would be, and we can talk about that further at our next meeting. And, uh, but I do want you to be thinking about that over, over the next week. Great, so next, we, uh, can go to, uh, public comments, and just, will you just name them?
There are three members of the public online, and I'm gonna call on each individual, uh, to speak. Uh, you'll have two minutes to speak if you, uh, would like to share a comment. If you don't have a comment, uh, we can, um, put you back on mute. So our first person will be Robert W., I'm gonna unmute him.
Robert?
Thank you, this was, um, fantastic, and, um, I appreciate that you all are reading the, um, descriptions, that's all.
And was that Robert W.?
Yeah, it's Robert W.
I honestly, Robert.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Yeah. The next speaker, uh, will be invited is Paul Burke. I'm muting you now.
Commission for allowing the public to listen in and, and see part of the process of, um, choosing the next flag of our county, I really appreciate it. Um, I would like to encourage the commission to continue to read the descriptions. I heard some discussion of eliminating based solely on color. Um, and I, I want to remind everyone that the written description was a key component of the submission. So it's great that, uh, you have been reading it, um, please continue. Um, I, I would also like to, uh, note or, or advocate for, um, some, some real critical, uh, um, discerning and decision-making. I, one of the justifications I heard for eliminating a flag tonight was, quote, "I'm not feeling it." Uh, when, when choosing a symbol that can represent thousands upon thousands of our fellow county citizens, I, I hope there is significant thought behind justifications for both positive and negative feedback. I appreciate the opportunity again, thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
It's just like a local town.
Okay, our, our last person for public comment is Joel Horowitz, I'm going to unmute you now.
Joel.
Yeah, I, I, good evening, I wasn't planning on knowing that we were gonna get to talk today, but I, one, as I testified, with the botany cross issue, appears you weren't talking about them. I could not follow well enough which were in your further discussion file when you were going through them. So it's hard for me to comment on that. As for the colors, I do think in some of them, if you took certain parts of them and maybe changed some of the colors, because, um, I did hear when you were talking about the brilliant green, I didn't find that as a brilliant green. I don't know, I guess, how much variation occurred during the printing process from what the artist envisioned. As for your further thing, I, I have a lot of friends who like ranked choice voting, I guess if you'd like to try that process, that would give, uh, a example of whether it's easy enough to work if you had a ranked choice voting system for voting on the flags. Um, but as I said, I, I wasn't sure which your finalists were to give enough comment at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Joel.
Okay, those were all the people coming? Great.
All right, so, I mean.
Just, just for everyone's awareness, we, we will meet again on Monday, uh, the twenty-first at six PM in this room. And, uh, for me, uh, staff work is to take the, uh, images that are left on the wall here and the potentials, put them into one document with the matching descriptions and send that back to the group. I'm noting that tomorrow is Friday, and we meet again on Monday. Uh, so I don't know if I will be able to get that done before late afternoon on Monday.
Okay.
But we'll have it in front of us now.
That's my goal, everybody.
That should be okay. That's it. Thank you.
Do it during the workday.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
All opposed?